So Adam, should it be on the screen here in the? There it is.
We had 18 people register for the webinar, so that's, that's good for the public hearing, I should say. Well, the speakers work.
I feel like I'm in that show Lost in Space. I think I just dated myself, though.
That's kind of an epic sound. Do we need to wait to make sure that everything's okay on Michelle's end there, or can we get started?
Not yet, no, we can start because that's only for the public hearing at seven, so.
Okay.
You're free to go.
Awesome. All right, well, it is 6:01, and as we call this meeting to order, I'm going to start by reading the right-to-know script here. So today, we will be conducting a school board meeting of the Mont Vernon Village School Board. Before we get started, I'll read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting we're holding is in compliance with the right-to-know law. As the chairperson of the Mont Vernon School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor, and as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to the executive order 2020-04 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe for this part of the meeting and to listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. In accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that, number one, we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to the meeting on Zoom and via phone by following the directions and links provided on our website, which is www.sau39.org. Second, we have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. Number three, we are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email A. Wallace, that's A.W.A.L.L.A.C.E. at sau39.org. Four, in the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, we will be adjourned and rescheduled. Five, please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Six, finally, let's go ahead and start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where you are and if anyone else is in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. Thank you, let's call the roll. Mr. O'Keefe.
I am present alone in the metropolis of Mont Vernon.
Mr. St. Dennis.
I am alone on Earth in Mont Vernon all.
Thank you, Mrs. Hinckley.
I'm home and alone.
Wonderful, welcome, Mr. Eckhoff.
I am home, two dogs, and trying to get my mood lighting right here, so you guys can see my.
Wonderful, and I am home and alone. Thank you all for being here, this is our school board meeting portion of the evening. I'm just gonna click and open up our agenda. We do have an initial public comment time scheduled at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know that we have any public presence, so I'm just gonna take a quick peek. Adam, do you see anyone or any questions?
There are a couple of people from the public, and so if any of them would like to speak, they can just use the raise hand feature.
Just give you a minute in case technology is getting you, you know?
We do have one, Peter King would like to speak.
Wonderful, Mr. King, you have the floor. You are muted if you are speaking right now.
All right, how's that, is that better?
Now we, yes.
Okay, um, I don't know if I'm on the agenda to speak about the deliberative session, or if I do it in public time, so it's up to you.
So I did put you on my list for time during the public hearing. Would you like to talk about the deliberative session now, or did you want to do that during the public hearing?
It's up to you, whatever works. I can do it now, because I think it's gonna be pretty simple.
Go for it.
And Adam can fill in with whatever I get wrong. But essentially, the state allows districts to do an all, there's a couple of alternatives we could do if we don't want to hold the deliberative session at its normally scheduled time. I don't think any of them are really good options. The one that is sort of COVID-specific allows the deliberative to be conducted in two parts with drive-up voting. And I think that, that would be something would have to do if we had so many people that we couldn't accommodate a socially distant deliberative session. So I don't think, I think that's off the table, we could talk about it more if you had questions, but there's a whole bunch of reasons I would say it's off the table. So what we're planning on doing is the same thing, I believe, that Amherst and South Heagan districts are doing, and that would be to have a conventional deliberative session. In, for our case, it would be in the NPR, and we would make sure that it was socially distant. I believe we can do that with the room that we have based on the typical attendance that we have at a deliberative session. We can spread out chairs. If, and also, I don't think we have anything on the agenda that I know of that is controversial. So, you know, we're not building a new school, we're not doing a whole bunch of things. So it's basically business as usual with the deliberative. As before, we're also gonna offer an option, and I think this is causing some confusion. We will run the deliberative meeting through a Zoom platform. However, if you want to participate in the meeting, you've got to be present in the school. If you just want to watch it, you can watch it on Zoom, but there'll be no opportunity for comments or for voting. And that's really because you can't, we can't screen and screen in the registered voters who choose to watch from Zoom. So it's not allowed to vote over Zoom. So that's, that's basically it, it's business as usual. If people don't want to come into school and just want to watch it, they can watch it. And I know Sarah's posted a few things on social media, and I have two, I'm just trying to get the word out there that, you know, if anyone wants to come. But there seems to be also a misperception that this is the opportunity to vote on budget, and the school's gonna try to pass things without people knowing it by doing it at the deliberative session. So I'm doing my best, and I know Sarah's supporting me on this, to try to get the real information out that it's really to determine what goes on the ballot. So that's, I guess that's what I've got for now. Any questions, or Adam, did I get it right?
You got it right, Mr. Moderator.
All right.
Thank you, Pete. And hopefully, we can continue to get the word out, I think, you know, the more we, the more we help people understand what each meeting is for, the better, because I think that's where the confusion comes in, is that people aren't exactly sure what meeting, what happens at what meeting, or what they can do, or what they're going to learn at those meetings. So I did post a link to the minutes from the meetings, from both meetings from last year. So if people are new to town or are new to the process, that they could go ahead and review those minutes and kind of get a feeling for the flow of the meetings and what happens. If anyone is interested, know that, you know, if you go to the sau39.org website, you can click on the school board tab and click on the Mont Vernon School Board page there, and you'll see that it says there are meeting minutes. I think for the current year, I think it's noted as 2019, but don't let that fool you. Like, if you click that link, it will bring you to a list of all of the current meeting minutes, and you can do that. You just need to click more at the bottom, and you'll see all of the ones from last year. You'll see right next to the ones in December and January, or January and February, the public hearing meeting minutes and the deliberative session meeting minutes and the presentations as well. So you can get a feel again for what those things look like and how they flow, because I think that can help. Did you have anything else that you wanted to tack on to that, Pete?
I just, I did have a question, and the question is, the deliberative session is February 3rd. The calendar shows that at 6 o'clock, it says there's a school board meeting and deliberative session. Is it in fact a 7 o'clock deliberative preceded by a 6 o'clock school board?
Yes.
Okay. I would suggest that the SAU calendar reflected that way, because people are starting to think that the deliberative is 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you can show them as two separate meetings, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you for the feedback. Sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so I know you had the budget hearing at 7:00, is it the same Zoom link for the budget hearing?
Yes.
Okay, I'll probably be back then.
Okay, great, we'll see you then, thank you.
Okay, thanks, okay.
Did we have any other members of the public during public time?
There are no others, two of your board members have their hands up.
Yeah, I see that, okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so let's go to Mr. O'Keefe, you had your hand raised first, and then Mr. Eckhoff, I'll get to you next.
Yeah, so Pete, if you're still there, I do have a couple of quick questions.
I'm here.
Awesome, first of all, thank you very much for your efforts. I know this is probably one of the most awkward deliberative sessions in your tenure as moderator to coordinate. So thank you very much for your, for all that you've done so far. My question is with regards to the ballot, right? And so I know by attending the town budget committee meetings, they are already contemplating, if not have already made the decision to defer town meeting until May. How is that going to impact our ballot process, and is there anything special that we need to know about for that?
No, that's a good question, and I talked to the selectmen, the select board this week. The town election is still going to be held on Town Election Day, so that's not going to impact us one bit. So they still, we still will elect officers and things like that, so the, the questions from the deliberative will be on the ballot.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Eckhoff.
Hold on. I was trying to make sure I was unmuted. Given the fact that there's already misinformation out there, is it worthwhile for us to expend some funds to do a direct mailer to all taxpayers and explain the timeline, what's going to be covered, how it's going to be handled? And so there's no confusion as to the process and what's going to be covered. The last thing we want is people saying, well, I didn't know, is it worth it?
It's a good question, Pete, I don't, I don't know that we've done that in the past. Mr. King, do you recall if we've done anything like that? Like, I mean, I know that we've sent out, that those postcards used to go out with the dates on.
I don't know about postcards, I do have, I was contacted by David Brooks today to ask, he was asking about the information for the town flyer, which is an email that's sent out, and I told him I would get back to him after tonight with, with, you know, specific details. I do know that at one point, there was a, I'm gonna call it a very large mailer, because the SAU would send out the entire budget for South Heagan and for Mont Vernon to every, every residence. And that was a pretty considerable thing, that was done for a number of years. But I can't say whether it's been done recently.
I don't recall that being done in the recent past, a big one like that. And, Mr. Eckhoff, I mean, the other thing that we could do is we could ask if, if the meeting dates and times could be put on that placard outside of the town hall. You know, the, the signboard that's got the movable letters, you know what I mean? Like that, that one there, I mean, it's low-tech, but that would at least give people, as they drive through town, you know, the, the dates and times. And the town flyer, I know that's an electronic one, so if people are not, are not online, they're certainly not going to see it. What about, the citizen is completely online now, right? I think they're not printed, so what are our other options? I mean, is our, is our neighboring district putting anything in, in the cabinet or anything like that in one of the local newspapers?
I wouldn't hold much faith in.
Voter guide will be put out, I'm sorry, Pete.
No, I just gonna say, I wouldn't put much faith in people reading a newspaper in this, in today's times.
We have, the PTA has a letter board that we can put out in front of the school, too.
Okay, I mean, I would think that whatever ways we can get the dates out there, the dates and times would be helpful, so that's one thing for sure. What's, board members, I'm kind of looking to you to see, what are your thoughts about a mailer? Do you think that's something that would be helpful? Mr. Steele, I'll also ask you the same question.
Yeah, I, I like the postcard that we have done in the past, I think that's a really helpful thing for folks. You might even consider coordinating with the town if they're going to have a different town meeting day, putting all of that together and sending that all out as one postcard. And even if it references folks to our website, I think that would be helpful as well. Whatever, whatever the board wants, we can, we can make happen.
I just think it's important that, to Peter's comments that, okay, you can watch, watch the proceedings Zoom, but you can't vote, you can't participate. I think there's gonna be some, a little bit of confusion there, and I think we need to be really succinct and clear that this is how it's gonna operate this year, these are the guidelines. If you want to participate, raise questions, and vote, this is how it's gonna be handled at the school. We're gonna save distance, we're gonna have plenty of room, we're gonna have plenty of chairs, we're gonna do it properly. I just think it's in our best interest to get the points across that this is the procedure, that's all.
Yeah, Peter, if I can also just echo real fast, Sarah, if it's okay with you. It all comes down to the language, so announcing the deliberative session on that particular day, and then another line saying something, in fact, it will also be live streamed for those who choose not to participate. So something is exact and specific like that, so there is no, you know, vagueness about, you know, oh, if I can log in on Zoom or a webinar, I can still vote. You know, those who choose not to participate, it'll be livestreamed, and that's, that's, that's probably the best way to approach that. Whether it's by, by postcard, or whether it's by social media and the placard that's in front of town hall. I agree with you, I don't know anybody that reads the cabinet, I canceled my subscription a while ago. So like, that, that could be like the best approach, I don't know how much a postcard mailing is. I know the town is gonna have to send out a mailing to all the citizens in town, all the registered voters, not households, but all the registered voters with a copy of the warrants and the budget in advance, because they're moving the town meeting as per the ruling of the moderator. So this is something I think we can easily do, Pete, it's just a quick postcard.
So, Adam, can I go ahead and just maybe coordinate with your office and see what we can do to make that happen, does that sound?
Please do, and something Christine had a great idea as well, so the Zoom registration email, when people will get the confirmation after they register, I'm editing that right now to make exceptionally clear that they'll not be able to participate via Zoom, so that every time someone signs up, they'll get an email that explains it to them as well.
Okay, that sounds great, Scott, Jess, you, what's your feeling on it?
I think the more info, the better.
Okay.
Right, I'm bouncing ideas around my head, if it would make sense to throw either a small, like tiny URL or a QR code on there that goes directly to a video of someone explaining exactly this, so that if they could scan it real quick, whether we have that QR up around town, post office, wherever, or just right on that card with either Mr. Steele, or you, Sarah, or somebody just explaining really quick, here's how it's gonna run, it's in words, it's not misinterpreted reading, it's just another option to put out there. I don't know how official that might be.
Thank you for the input, I agree, I think whatever ways we can talk about it and get it out there, and certainly, you know, I'll, I'll put it on Mont Vernon Chatter on Facebook so that people there are aware, I think that's helpful. And Adam, I'll coordinate with, with Abby in your office and see what we can do to make something happen, so thanks all. Mr. King, did you have anything else that you, that you think we should do to coordinate there?
Um, I guess, first of all, I'll just make a correction to what Mr. O'Keefe said. I've been talking with the, the moderator, and again, I was in the, on the selectman meeting the other day. I think the town is not gonna go with the HB 1178, I think it's called, which is an alternate town meeting format. Instead, they're gonna postpone the meeting, which they're allowed to do, I'm sorry, it was 1129. HB 1129 is the one that allows drive-up voting, and it has two sessions. The first one just being an information session, then folks would relay concerns to the governing body, and then the governing body would convene and take action on the things. It's a very complex process, in fact, the voters can essentially shoot it down in a vote, and make it moot, and, and you have to do a redo. That has the requirement that every registered voter gets their own postcard. I don't think the town's gonna go with that at all, they are just gonna postpone the meeting, which the moderator is allowed to do, and have it either in May or in June is what they're talking about. But the, the items that would be on the ballot will still be on the ballot in, in March. So that's what I've got, I guess, you know, I'm always open for information, I just want to make sure the right information gets out there. What has me a little bit concerned is people thinking that their right to vote on the budget is gonna be taken away if they miss the deliberative session. I'm not discouraging people to come to deliberative, but it's, it's really not where they have their say on how the school gets funded to, to any great degree, it's really just a matter of, we can, we can make small modifications to the language or possibly the budget on, on certain items. So, you know, the, I guess that's all I have to say, we, I do want to get the information out and get it out correctly, but I also don't want to create an alarmist state where we, we do have, you know, 1,000 voters show up for the deliberatives, because we've never had that before. I'm guessing we have 10 to 15 people show up at a deliberative. And if that's the case, we'll do it in a, you know, COVID-friendly way and space people out, so that's what I got. If you don't have questions, I'll probably mute it and go have a bite to eat and come back at 7:00.
Yeah, I don't see any other board members with their hands raised for you, Pete, so go enjoy some dinner, and we'll see ya. We'll see you, thank you. Okay, I did want to make a quick note that Autumn Gardina posted in our Q and A during the public time that she would be happy to take on getting the letter board put up outside the school. So thank you very much, Autumn, for taking that and managing that, we appreciate it. Okay, so back to our agenda, we are up to the consent agenda approval on the minutes. We do have quite a few items on, on that consent agenda this evening. So before I entertain a motion, I'm just gonna kind of scan board members here. Does anyone have anything that they want to talk about, to discuss? It might be more prudent to talk about it first, and then, you know, see if we can just approve all of them. So does anyone have anything, Mr. O'Keefe?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, I was hoping that we can pull 9, 10, and 11, and I'll make a motion to table that until our February meeting, where we can spend a little bit more time diving deeper into those. That's the facilities update, the, I believe, the government or governor letter, and then the financial report.
Okay, so there is a motion to, to pull items 9, 10, and 11 from the consent agenda this evening and table them. Do I have a second for that motion? Mrs. Hinckley seconds that motion, so let's do a roll call vote, Mr. O'Keefe.
Yes.
Madam Chairwoman, I make one comment.
Oh, sure.
For the financial report, I believe, is that the audit report, Mr. O'Keefe?
Yeah, unfortunately, Adam, I didn't have an opportunity to go through it, and I know they're customary, but they're just doing a perusal. There was just a couple of things that popped out, I mean, I want to reel a little bit further so I can make an educated view of it and approve it with, without any concerns.
No problem, so our auditor is here tonight, and the audience, I guess it's called, and he was prepared to speak to anything, but that's fine, we can, I just wanted to make the board aware that, that he was here this evening if he had any questions. But if you've not had a chance to review it, then you should absolutely table it and approve it next time.
I would just be more comfortable doing it that way.
Okay, so I'm going to continue with, with our roll call vote for that motion. So if you are not on board with that, then you would say no, and we can continue with, with reviewing it. Mr. St. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hinckley?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Eckhoff.
Eckhoff, yes.
Okay, and Lawrence, yes, so we can, we can table those three. So now, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 8? Mr. O'Keefe?
I'll make that motion, approve consent agenda item 1 through 8.
Okay, do we have any discussion, or do I have a second, sorry, my brain, do I have a second for that motion?
All second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hinckley, any, any discussion? Okay, so let's go ahead and, sorry, let's go ahead and take a vote on that, Mr. O'Keefe?
O'Keefe, yes.
Mr. St. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hinckley?
Yes.
Mr. Eckhoff?
Eckhoff, yes.
And Lawrence, yes, so thank you. I will say, as I've said in all other meetings, that I do appreciate the principal's report. So Dr. Sarfati, thank you again for that wonderful summary of what's happening in our schools and with our kids. It is really nice to see all the updates, and I particularly noted that, you know, the comments from the staff and the teachers about their highlights, I loved reading those, so, you know, if you are, you know, if you're someone who has not read that, read that, read through that part of this document, please take a minute and read that, because, you know, there are some beautiful things happening here in the midst of kind of, you know, chaos and, and in the world, and, and, you know, some, some very, very deep loss in our community. So I just wanted to note that there are good things that happened, too, and, and certainly thank you to the staff and to you for noting those, because it's always nice to know that there's a bit of light. Thank you. Okay, so we are at the point where we are going to be doing a little bit of prep for our public hearing presentation. So what I would love at this minute, I don't know, Michelle or Adam, if you have that presentation, if you could pull that up so we can just take a look at it, and then, board members, if there's anything in particular that you want to add, edit, we can go through that now. Michelle, if you've got anything that you want to share, before we do that, I would be happy to turn it over to you to guide us through that. Adam, same thing, Christine, happy to, happy to have your, your input.
I'm happy to share my screen and have folks walk through it.
Thank you.
So this is, echoing in the room, sorry. This is the same document that we have reviewed in December with some modifications.
Michelle, you're probably going to have to go to a different room, I'm sorry, or turn down the speakers in the NPR.
Wait, when Mondo's gonna turn it down. Okay, oh, that seems better. So this is the presentation that was reviewed at the December 10th meeting. I've added slides. I've added slides to show the proposed warrant article language, the draft at this point, and updated the numbers since the last meeting to include both the bus contract that we had talked about at the last meeting, and then also there was a request to put in some budget adjustment for proposed increase for the kitchen manager. So both of those modifications have been made, and these numbers reflect that. So this just shows the summary of the numbers and the change. 5.6% increase over a 21 for the default and 5.7% increase over 21 for the proposed. The slide is the budget overview, just kind of showing that graphically. And then the appropriation comparison. This is the draft warrant article for the operating budget with the current numbers, 5.8 million proposed for the, the proposed budget employed, 5,825,01 for the default. This is the default calculation. Again, the tuition number is the most significant change, and that's really primarily due to a change in the number of students, an increase. I believe it's 65 students in the budget. And then it goes down from there with various different adjustments that had been discussed earlier. The New Hampshire rate, New Hampshire retirement system rates were increased this for FY '22. Slight change for the SAU apportionment, and so on through these adjustments. This is the list of the default budget, from the default budget to the proposed, the significant changes. Here's some additional funding for facility-related items, software, small variances of all the other accounts, reduction in technology equipment, to get to a total change of 4,922. And then at the bottom here, there's the proposed warrant article to provide another 50,000 in the reserve fund to get to the, the total of those two items, the operating budget and the reserve. The budget composition. Salary levels didn't change. That's what we had in place in December. And staffing chart here, then you can see, you know, no change from FY '21 to FY '22. And non-certified staff. I know this number here for food service looks a bit bizarre. But so I have put a little note at the bottom here. That position was modified from what was a salary position to an hourly position, and then the hours per day were modified. Initially, it was classified as salary, but it did not meet the requirements to be a salary position. The summary of the contributions and expected expenditures for the reserve fund. And then here's a list of the items that we've carried forward from really the prior year, that are items that are needing some attention and, and a plan, but are not in the current year budget and FY '22 either. And our items that the board might want to consider, either funding in another way. We have a list of the possible town trust funds that could fund the retaining wall. Thank you, Sarah, for sending those to me. I've added those to a slide. And then the building repairs and maintenance, some items there that could potentially be funded through unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. And then a server replacement for, for technology. This is the proposed language for the collective bargaining agreement that was just recently negotiated. And this next slide shows a comparison to the last agreement and the amounts that were in place at that time. Tuition agreement is on the ballot, is the, or on the warrant proposed for the warrant. That's the language there. And this is a bulleted list of the summary of the agreement. I don't know if there's anything on this particular slide that folks wanted to modify. I'm hoping that it covers the talking points that you'd like to address. This is the language for the expendable trust fund contribution, the additional 50,000 to go into that fund. And then we just went into talking a little bit about the process that has, that we have gone through, working with the budget committee and members of the board and administration to review the budget to get to this point of having a proposed budget. And I do want to thank everybody for their efforts. It was a great process going through and reviewing the budget. And a lot of time was spent doing that. So thank you, everyone, for that. And recognizing the members of the budget committee, and then just talking about the next steps from this point from the hearing going forward. Any questions or comments? I'm not sure which slides folks are going to be presenting at the hearing.
Thank you, Michelle. So I know I had a-
You don't have to turn the volume back up.
I know, Mr. O'Keefe, I asked if you would feel comfortable presenting the, the tuition agreement. So was there anything on those slides that you would like to modify that would make talking points easier for you? Anything else you would like to highlight there?
I think if we added in the three qualitative, qualitative type features of the contract as well that we negotiated successfully, I think that's going to add in another sort of key component for the public to see the difference between the last contract and this one. I can send you real fast, Michelle, the exact language.
If you want to edit the slide up, I think you have edit rights. You're welcome to do that as well. Adding another slide, we can do that, too.
You know what? I could just speak to it, Michelle, and then we'll make sure it's added at the deliberative session so people can, can see it. The spacing on the slides is a little off, so cramming the three more things, it just would look very tight.
Folks, help me out. What does ADM stand for in the third bullet point?
Average daily membership.
Okay, thank you.
The way the per cost per people student calculations being figured out.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Ekoff, you and I talked briefly about presenting the MVEA proposed agreement. So is there anything that you would like to see on that slide, any, any talking points? I did ask Michelle to put in the prior contracts information so that it would be there for comparison. But I didn't know if there was anything else that you thought might be helpful.
No, I think that's fine. You know, it's top level, what we negotiated. So I think it was fine.
I know there's been some community questions about this contract, so I would expect that we might have some questions on that tonight. Just, Adam, as a heads up for you on that, that we may need some additional information there. If anyone has questions, I know that I would be expecting a couple on that one.
No problem. And I have answered a couple via email in preparation for tonight as well.
Wonderful, thank you. Scott, Jess, is there anything that you want added? I mean, I know, I'm, I'm happy to present the other slides. I mean, Michelle, you did a beautiful summary when you just ran through it. You know, if there's, if there are pieces that you would like to take and explain, I'm happy to do that. I mean, I don't need to hear my own voice saying these things. And I would be, be happy, you know, if, if you wanted to present, you know, a few of the financial slides, that's fine with me, too. Adam, same thing. If there's something that you feel passionate about presenting, I'm happy to, to let you do that. My one question is a little, just a little question. Literally with, with, I have this presentation on my screen, so I could clearly share my screen. But then if someone else is talking to it, you know, reverting control over, I'm not exactly sure how that works in this format. So anyone who is more text heavy with the presentation with multiple people wants to weigh in on that, on, let me know.
So I can perhaps jump in. First, I'm happy to defer to the board for the presentation of the slides. And if there's anything that you want me to speak to in particular, just let me know, and I can do that.
Awesome.
Like, I will put the slides up and just kind of follow. People can let me know when you want me to advance a slide, and I can, so I'll share my screen.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Michelle, this is really nitpicky. The current slide we're on. Can you drag the text that's on top of those colored images on the bottom right there where it says such sum required by a majority vote? And just truncate it a little bit so that the majority vote required really stands out and doesn't get hidden by the purple. Any colorblind people are out there trying to read it, it's going to be really difficult.
Got a little better?
Thank you, yeah, absolutely.
Anything else? You know, Jess, Steven, Peter? Adam, your thoughts? We feel that we've got everything. I think that we've got everything fairly well captured. Like I said, I think the most questions would be around the bargaining agreement.
Yeah, I agree. And remember, the public hearing is about warning the public about what we're going to be discussing in deliberative session. And so this presentation clearly does all of that very well. So brevity is perfectly okay for a public, a public hearing.
Okay. The one thing, while we have Roger here with us, I know we did not talk about the, the bids that were in the packet. But, you know, it does look like we're pretty close to $200,000 roof project in the near future. So I know that that might be a question that people would have regarding funding that warrant article. Is that something that the board thinks we should point out this evening? Or what's anyone else's thought on that?
We've been talking about the roof now for, you know, probably close to four years about this significant expense that's coming down the road. A part of the reason why I asked for it to be continued to next month is because when I saw the, the bids, I've got a couple of questions with regards to the approval process, the timeframe, the expectation, or the expected timeframe of actuary repairing the roof. Can we get another year out of it, those types of things? So, yeah, I think it's, it's always great to inform the public that it's something that's on the radar, whether or not it's going to happen in the summer or not. Like, that's the piece that's up for, for conversation at our next board meeting.
Oh, and actually, Michelle, thank you. This is a great slide. Yeah, this is helpful. Anybody else with anything else? I mean, I, I don't want to. I, I'll say, you know, last year's public hearing went, I thought, smoothly. You know, it really is about informing and educating and letting people know what's on the horizon so that people can ask questions like in between this meeting and the deliberative, or come to the deliberative more prepared with questions that, you know, that we can answer and tackle at that time. So, you know, this is, this is an evening that used to stress me out a lot. And I think the wonderful thing to say is, you know, if someone asks a question, we'll get back to on that. Like, that's something that, that we have some, some flexibility with this evening. But it's always good to hear from the public and get a sense of what people are wondering about. I mean, you know, where they're curious when it comes to the, to the budget. And, you know, just get a pulse for, for the community and for the town. Mr. Ekoff, I see your hand raised. Go for it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't know whether we're going to get any comments, but I know that we've had conversation about unexpected expenses due to COVID. And I know that there have been because of supplies and equipment that have been needed. So I don't know whether we can anticipate any questions tonight, and maybe whether Adam has or Roger has any answers as to what, what the impact has been for this fiscal year, but also what maybe what we can anticipate for next year in the budget for COVID-related preventative measures that we've been required to do to keep our, our buildings safe and clean.
It's a great point. Adam or Roger, do you have thoughts on that?
I saw a little different take than maybe what Peter was asking. But I think it's really the, the yo-yo effect with taxes. So people receive their tax bills, they went up significantly, and that's mostly due to the fact that we took last year's unassigned fund balance to pay for expenses this year. We've since been notified of significant federal support for those expenses, which will be coming back to us this year and should result in a significant decrease in the tax rate next fall. So I think what's more motivating people to ask the question is less what we've spent, but more about what's happened to their tax bills. So I think if we spoke to that, that'd be helpful. I, at this point, don't have any specific projections about what we'll need to spend next year as a result of COVID, but I'm, I'm thinking it's going to be within the bounds of what we have budgeted right now.
Okay, great.
And Sarah, I have a question regarding the presentation and how you would like it viewed. Do I need to stay with this kind of format that shows the other slides on the side or go to the presentation mode which only shows the one?
I think I'm okay with the ones on the side as long as everybody can see it. So I don't know. Does anyone else have a feeling on that? I mean, it, it's kind of nice to have the placeholders on the side so you know what's coming up.
Well, that's what, what I was thinking. It's hard to kind of have your bearings if you only see that one.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is from, I, I can certainly minimize this screen and pull up the presentation separately, but it defeats the purpose a little. So we'll roll with it. I'm sure everyone will be forgiving. I mean, for heaven's sake, last year I forgot Mr. Ekoff's name, so I'm sure people will forgive me this year. You know, if, if technology gets the better of me, no worries. I think everybody knows that I go with the flow. Okay, so I'm looking at all of your board member faces. Anyone have anything else that they'd like to add, change, edit? We feel like we're good. I feel like we're good.
I haven't forgotten that, just so you know.
I know. You're going to hold it against me. This year, it's easy. Everyone's names are right there. It's perfect. Okay, just from a logistical standpoint, Adam, are you okay if when, you know, when I open up that meeting that I just, you know, introduce everyone briefly, turn it over to you, you know, for, for opening comments? Does that work for you?
It's fine, perfect.
Okay. Kim, did you want a chance to, to say anything? What's your comfort level? What, where are you on that? I want to give you, I want to give you the floor, if you'd like the floor for sure. So let me know where you're at.
Kim actually wrote a song for Monvern and that she'd like to sing and perform. If the board's okay with that.
Yes, that is entirely true. No, I mean, I certainly can, I certainly can make some comments. I, I don't have any sort of song or speech prepared. However, absolutely, I'm happy to speak.
Okay, and how about, you know, I'm just looking at who's here. So Meg, Christine, is there anything that you would like to, to highlight, to address in this presentation? What can I do for you?
Low profile.
Low profile. You want to fly under the radar?
Right under the radar.
Okay. Christine, how about you?
I don't really have much. You know, one item certainly is the software. We did budget for additional software for next year. If we are still in a remote or a semi-remote environment, you know, we were doing the budget a few months ago. So, you know, that's one of the only changes that I have. Everything else is pretty standard for needs we have from year to year. So, and the only other thing that might be of importance to mention is that we do plan on doing a pretty deep review of our math curriculum and our math program. And we're slated to purchase math materials a year, you know, or a year and a half-ish from now. It would be in, in the FY '23 budget, and those are usually fairly expensive. So it might be important just to mention that, that while we don't have any major, you know, curriculum purchases this year, we do anticipate math for next year.
Okay, so when we get to that slide, you know, the slide that has like software on it? I don't know what number the slide is, but I may say, Christine?
Yeah. I'm happy to jump in.
And then you can jump in there. Okay, perfect. And Michelle, how about you? Anything that you'd like to highlight? I know you were very, you were wonderful at jumping in, you know, with, with the summary. So I'm sure if, if I fumble, you'll be there to catch the pass. I'm not a football person, so I don't even know what analogy I just made, but there you go. And Roger, I'm looking at you, too. Is there anything that you'd like to highlight from the facilities perspective? I'm so very proud of the work that you're doing. And I know that, you know, community members who are really looking at, at what we're doing with the, with the facilities and maintenance. And I know that, you know, community members who are really looking at, at what we're doing with the, with the facilities and maintenance are really impressed. So I want to give you a chance to highlight anything that you feel is, is there. So what do you got?
I think I'm good. I think Meg needs some company. And the work that Facilities is doing is kind of speaking for itself. But I'm definitely here to answer any questions if need be.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay. I don't know that we have anything else. I'm just going to click back over here. We do have a second public comment time slated for five minutes from now, but I think we could go ahead and say that, that we are open for public comment two of two. If anyone has any, any things that they would like to say, I'm not sure what we've got. So Adam, I'm looking to you to look in the chat. You're like the.
Yep, there is one person that's raised their hand. Ms. Eileen Neber.
Okay, can you, we could absolutely recognize Eileen Neber. So can you open up her?
All right. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Eileen. Yeah, thanks for joining us.
We have two school board positions coming up for election next month. And wondered if the two of our are going to re-up?
That's a great question, Eileen.
Put cloud to spot.
Mr. Eckhoff, would you like to comment first?
Well, thank you for the question, Eileen. And I, I got that question through Facebook and social media, which I am not a participant of from my wife. But nevertheless, my intention is to re-up for another, another term. So yes, my answer is.
I'm very happy to hear that, Mr. Eckhoff. And Eileen, I'll answer your question as well. I do plan on putting my name back on the ballot to run. So I would be honored to serve for another three years if the community feels so inclined.
Excellent.
You don't want to run, Eileen?
No, thank you.
Sure. But all the same, you know, we will make sure that, I know that it's been posted in Mont Vernon chatter. And I think the information is available on the SAU website as well on what positions are going to be open. And the filing period is coming up. I think it's the 28th. Is that right? I'm looking for a nodding head maybe from Adam or.
It ends the 29th. It's 10 days up to the 29th.
Thank you. Okay, there you go, Eileen. You're, you're my guide on the side. I appreciate you. So that filing period, we'll make sure that it's posted appropriately so that everyone knows what to do. I know that Autumn Gardena had posted a link with information. You can file the form online this year once the filing period opens. So you can do that. And, and certainly I know in Mont Vernon, the school board seats tend not to be contested. But, you know, certainly if people are interested, it is a very rewarding and fulfilling, you know, position. I won't tell you that it's always easy, but once you get into it and really, you know, learn what's going on, it's, it's really a wonderful thing to do. So I would encourage it.
Adam Chair, Peter King has his hand up again.
Mr. King, let's acknowledge you.
Thank you. I just, I missed most of your meeting, so I hope I'm, I'm not covering something you may have already covered. But um, we have a wonderful town person who asked questions about the teacher contract. Thank you, Eileen. And one of the things that's posted, it looks like it's the changes to the teacher's contract or the amendments to the teacher's contract. And I was wondering if the full teacher's contract would be available at some point.
So Adam, I'll defer to you.
It's a great question. We typically don't edit the and publish the full document until after it's been ratified by the voters just because it, it takes some, some time to do that and to edit that entire document. But we can, we can attempt to do that by the February deliberative session, but no promises we'll be able to do that in time.
Thank you.
Looks like we might have some other hands raised.
Mrs. Neber again.
Okay, Eileen, let's let you have the floor.
Now. Note of this, does that mean that we're going to vote on a full contract that we will not be able to read ahead of time?
My answer would be no, Mrs. Neber. So the, the, the document that's published references all of the changes to the existing agreement, which is, is already available for people to read. So it's, the entire contract is on our website. The document that's been provided highlights specifically down to every letter and comma and period, all of the changes that would happen to that contract should it be passed by voters.
Thank you.
So Mr. Steele, would it maybe be prudent to post, you know, a link to the current, to the existing agreement closer to the one with the changes so that community members don't have to go like hunting and pecking for that information? You know, if both are available, then, you know, to Eileen's point and to Mr. King's point, they could see the existing agreement and then be able to reference the changes. Would that be possible?
Not a problem at all.
Thank you. Was there another hand raised?
That's it.
Okay. Right, so. Do I need, I think I need a motion to, to put this meeting on hold because we will reconvene after the public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Steele? I think that's what we've done.
All you really need to do is recess for the next five minutes until seven. So.
Okay, so let's do that. We're going to go into a recess for the next five, four and a half minutes. And we will see you at seven when the public hearing begins. Thank you, everyone. Adam, quick question before we start. Do I need to review the right to know, right to know script since we already did it?
Nope, you're all set.
Thank you. Just give everybody a minute to pop back on. Okay, so it is 7:01. It's nice to see everyone back again. And welcome to any members of the public who are with us. I do need a motion to open the public hearing. So do I have a motion? Is anyone willing to make a motion to open the public hearing?
I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hinkley. All in favor of that motion, Mr. St. Dennis?
St. Dennis, yes.
Mr. Eckhoff?
Eckhoff, yes.
Mr. O'Keefe? I saw you say yes, Mr. O'Keefe.
O'Keefe, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Hinkley?
Hinkley, yes.
And Lawrence, yes. Thank you. So welcome this evening. We are just opening up our public hearing. So happy to see the faces that I see on screen and to any participants, you know, from the public that are joining us. We're so happy to have you here. If you are catching this as a recording, again, we're very happy that you are engaging in the process and always happy to, to have you here and to, you know, respond to your questions and comments. Before we get started, I would like to briefly acknowledge the people who are with us on the, on the Zoom. In case any members of the public are not aware of, of who's here. Adam Steele is our superintendent. So welcome, Adam. Christine Landerwall is our assistant superintendent. Thanks for the wave. Meg Beauchamp is our super, our super phenom of special education. We're glad to have you here. Roger Preston is our facilities and maintenance coordinator. And Dr. Kimberly Starfty is the principal of the Mont Vernon Village School. So we are happy to have you here. Abby Wallace is also here. She is the superintendent's, well, phenom extraordinaire administrative assistant, who is amazing. So we all appreciate Abby. The board members that are present here as well, my name is Sarah Lawrence. I am your current school board chair. Peter Eckhoff is, is here. He is your vice chair. Mr. Stephen O'Keefe is present. Mr. Scott St. Dennis and Mrs. Jessica Hinkley are all here and at your service. So welcome. Oh, Michelle, I'm so sorry. You were on my second screen. I apologize for missing you in the first go around. So Michelle Crotto is our business administrator and she is present at the village school. Thank you for being there. And, and thank you also to, to our tech crew who is there making it possible for anyone who wanted to join in person to, to be there. So thank you so much. Briefly, before we get started, I just want to say that this evening, the public hearing, the point of the public hearing is to review the presentation, to go over an executive summary of the budget and any proposed warrant articles. We will have time for public comment and questions. So what I would encourage you to do, especially in this Zoom world, is as we're presenting, if anything comes up to you, just maybe write it down so that when we open up public comment time, you'll have the opportunity to, to ask any of your questions or to, to share your comments. And if we haven't answered them, by the time public time comes around, definitely just use the raise your hand feature at that time. We'll let you know and I'll remind you then. But the only thing that you need to do to get on the record is to state your name and your street address when that, if you choose to speak, just as an FYI. So before we jump into the slide presentation, I would just like to turn it over to Superintendent Steele so that you can kind of kick us off here and, and let everybody know what to expect.
Sure. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. So for members of the public, we're once again very pleased to bring to you our proposed budget that we think reflects very well what this town expects for the Mont Vernon Village School, which remains a special place and a wonderful place for students to go to school. In addition to the budget, we have the tuition agreement between Amherst and Mont Vernon for our seventh and eighth grade students who attend the Amherst Middle School. And in addition, we have a four-year collective bargaining agreement with our Mont Vernon Education Association for the teachers there as well. And finally, as we have for the last several years, is the $50,000 warrant article to fund our long-term capital needs. The most pressing of those needs is our roof, which will have more news about coming soon. But basically, we're approaching the time when it's time to replace the roof. And we're very pleased to have put that money away in past years to save it for, to be able to pay cash for that when the time comes. But that's it, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for letting me intro what we're going to do tonight. And I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Always appreciate your guidance and leadership. So Michelle, could I ask you to start sharing your screen so that we can take a look at that presentation? Thank you. Okay. And so let's start off with our summary. These are just the highlights, right? The big things that you need to know. So the FY22 default budget would come in at a 5.6% increase over FY21. That equates to 310,359. The FY22 proposed budget would be only a 5.7% increase. So that's 315,281. The difference between the default and the proposed is $4,922 or an increase of 0.1% over FY21. So just so that we know the numbers that we're talking about here, if you pass the proposed budget, it's a 5.7% increase. If you do not pass the proposed budget, it is a 5.6% increase. So the difference between the two is, I don't want to say negligible because $5,000 is not negligible, but you know, it's $4,922 is the difference that we're talking about here between passing the budget or not passing the budget. Okay? That excludes the special warrant articles. And just for reference, when we get to the deliberative session is when you'll see what the, what the potential tax impact would be. We don't have those specific numbers for you tonight, but you will have that at the deliberative session, you know, coming up just so that you know what to expect. So Michelle, can I have you advance to slide three? This is just a graphical representation of that budget overview. So it just shows you that, you know, there's the 5%, excuse me, 5.6% increase. And that slight 0.1% increase would bring us to the 5.7% increase that's proposed. So the default is the one that you would see as the left-hand number. And the proposed is the one that you would see on the right. And again, that's excluding the special warrant articles. Can we pop to slide number four? Thank you. Here is a comparison. Here is a comparison. We have the budget line listed at the top. So, when you're looking there, the first number that you see is the FY21 number, that 5,512,142, that's FY21. The FY22 number is 5,827,423. Again, that difference that we noted on the first slide is 315,281 or a difference of 5.7%. The warrant articles proposed is a $50,000 proposal. That's the warrant article for the Capital Maintenance Fund. So, that would bring the total at FY21 would have brought us up to 5,562,142 and for proposed FY22, 5,877,423. So, there's those numbers for you. We can go ahead and advance to slide number five. This is the operating budget warrant article. So, this is going to be article number two that would be placed on the ballot. And it reads Sheldon Mont Vernon School District raised and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately. The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $5,827,423. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $5,822,501, which is the same amount as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Mont Vernon School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40, blah, 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 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget. Now, this does require a majority vote to pass. Okay? The default calculation is something that people often ask about, like what is the difference between the default budget and the proposed budget? So, what this slide shows you is how the default calculation is basically arrived at. So, on the left-hand column there, you see the FY21 adopted budget. So, that also includes all warrant articles. And then it shows you line by line. Okay, so tuition would be the top one, which is listed at 251. I'm squinting a little bit. I apologize. 251,797 or about 4.5% of the budget. Special education is in there. So, this, the first line that's noted is special education other than out of district. So, that accounts for about 1% of the default calculation. There's the, I think that's the retirement rate. The NHRS is what it looks like to me. So, that's the retirement rate. So, that also accounts for about 1%. There's the SAU apportionment, which is 0.3%. There's salaries. So, those are contractual wages that are listed in. Transportation falls into the default budget. That's both regular transportation and special education transportation. Food services falls into the default calculation. There are certain one-time items. I'm sure if we have a question about that, Michelle could chime in what those are. Other employee benefits, health insurance, the special warrant article, that's the capital improvement, the maintenance fund is there. And special education out of district tuition is also included here. So, the subtotal of the changes to the default, as stated, is 263,59. And that would get us to the default budget at 5,822,501. So, just in case you're wondering what goes in there. The proposed budget calculation has anything that is over that default budget. So, in this case, we've got some facilities repairs and maintenance. About 17,638 would be here. There's a software line, just about $3,000 and I'll ask Christine to speak to that in a minute. We've got some technology equipment replacement in here, but that is actually, you'll see that that's noted as negative. And then the next line is the subtotal to the default, subtotal of changes to the proposed, from the default to the proposed. So, again, that's a difference of only $4,922 and the proposed budget is 5,827,423. The special warrant article is noted separately because that's voted on separately. So, if that were to be passed, the total, including the special warrant article, would be raised by $50,000 to 5,877,423. So, Christine, before we move the slide, I'm going to have you pop back for one second. Can I just have you tell everybody what that software is? And I know we chatted about this briefly before, but it may help people to understand what's going on here.
Yes, we did budget for additional software if needed for next year. We just, at the time of budgeting, we just really were not sure what type of environment we'd be in, if we would be in a remote or a hybrid. You know, we hope to be fully in person next year. And as we get closer to that, we're feeling more and more confident about that. But when we did do budget, we wanted to budget some additional funds for software if needed. There's really more extensive software needed in a remote environment and we wanted to make sure we had what we needed for teachers in case it was necessary.
Okay, thank you. And Roger, did you want to briefly mention what's in the facilities repair and maintenance, that 17 and change?
As far as the 17 and change, I think it's just us picking up preventative maintenance plans for the entire building, really outlining getting all of our systems maintained annually. Our life safety systems, gym equipment, all of our systems really throughout our buildings, we're looking to pick up.
Okay, great. Thank you. We can advance to the next slide, Michelle. Thank you. This is just a pie chart. Okay, everybody loves a pie chart. So, it just shows you in a slightly different way, graphically, where the money is going. So, like the big thing here in the chart is salaries, right? So, salaries is that big hunk of blue over on the right. You know, our staff and our teachers certainly, you know, do the bulk of the work with our students day-to-day. Benefits is included there. So, again, you'll see that as kind of that red wedge, a little bit lower down towards the bottom, you know, like between the four and the six o'clock position there. We do have contracted services as the like amber goldenrod color next to the red piece of the pie. Transportation is that green piece. We've got tuition as our other kind of major player here. So, that's tuition to the Amherst School District. And we are going to talk about that in a little bit more detail shortly because we do have a new tuition agreement on the horizon with the Amherst School District. So, we'll be discussing that as well. But that's another big piece of the pie. The other little things that are there, I mean, we've got food service. We've got another category and another like tuition thing that's in there. There are some grants in there as well. So, just so that you know, you know, where the, what the big players are, those are they. Staffing levels. Okay, there's no major story here. As you'll see, staffing levels are remaining consistent. So, the column to look in really like if you look at in the current, if we're looking down, so look at the top from the current level down and from the proposed down. So, you know, our students, the level goes by grade. So, you'll see kindergarten currently is 27, first grade 27, second grade 28, all the way down for a total of about 203 students. If you go over to the proposed or projected, kindergarten is projected at about 33 students. First grade would be 28, second grade 29, third grade 28, going down for a total of about 211 students. So, there's a projected, a small increase projected. In the teachers column, which is next to that, again, no, like no major story here. Two teachers per grade for a total of 14 teachers currently and 14 proposed. There's nothing, you know, there's nothing happening there. The ratio changes slightly. Currently, we're at about a 14.5 to one ratio. In the proposed, we'd be at about a 15.07 to one ratio, just so that is out there. So, no major story here, but that's what's going on with staffing. Certified staffing as well. You're not going to see any major shifts here. Again, you've got a total of 25.4 staff currently and 25.4 projected. There's no major changes. Our non-certified staffing, you'll see a slight change between FY21 and FY22. It actually goes down a little. And that's because the kitchen manager position got adjusted, I believe. And Michelle, maybe you can just chime in here, but I believe it was going from a salaried position to an hourly position because the position didn't qualify as a salaried position. But Michelle, I'll let you jump in and just clarify that for me.
Yes, thank you. That is correct. There are certain criteria for position to be classified as a salary position and this position did not meet those criteria. So, when it was reclassified, the hours were also clarified and adjusted. And that's what results in this kind of odd number here in terms of a ratio of full-time equivalent.
Okay, thank you very much. So, here's kind of the facilities and maintenance, the roof replacement and HVAC upgrade plan. This is what we are putting, that $50,000 a year. You know, you vote on a warrant article to put that $50,000 aside so that we have money in the bank to be able to pay for these large replacements. So, currently, we have $311,067 in that account. If that account also gets funded in FY22, that number would go up to 361,67. The reason why this is important is because there is a targeted roof replacement on the horizon. You know, the board is entertaining some bids for a new roof. You know, we'll be talking about that next month. You know, there are, I think, three bids that are available currently. So, we're going to be discussing that. The estimated cost of the roof replacement is about $300,000. So, if that were to happen in FY22, that $361,000 and this is, this is if that fund gets funded, that 361 would go down to 61,000, so 61,067 because it's a big repair. The HVAC is also targeted for upgrade in FY22, sorry FY25. So, that's just something again to look out on the horizon, just like we would plan and budget for, you know, big maintenance projects in our own homes. We're planning and budgeting for big maintenance items in our buildings. So, that's something that we know is on the horizon and, you know, Roger Preston is doing an amazing job at making sure that the board is aware of these items and that, you know, everything's happening in a timely manner to maintain the integrity of our building and to make sure that we get the most out of our investment for the community. So, the estimated cost of that HVAC replacement or upgrade would be $180,000. Again, we project that if we continue to contribute $50,000 a year, that that fund would be adequate to support our projected replacements and upgrades. Okay? So, voters, just so that you know, our town voters have approved the $50,000 to this fund since FY18. I will tell you that this board is grateful for that contribution and we do hope that you continue to support it. It is again a $50,000 special warrant article that you'll see for FY22 is the proposal. We do have a couple of items that were not in the proposed budget, but we want to make sure that the community is aware of them because they are items that the board is aware of and has been discussing. So, just for sake of transparency, we do have some grounds repair and maintenance that we are aware of. There's a retaining wall by the basketball court that needs some work. It certainly is not dangerous at this time. If it were, it would be addressed, you know, very, very quickly and promptly. But we know that this is a repair that's likely going to be needed on the horizon. It's estimated at about $20,000. We have explored with the town, some of the town trust fund opportunities that might be able to fund part of this repair. So, we did list out with the help of the trustees of the trust funds, those particular funds that may have funding available. These were the amounts that were quoted to us at the time. Now, here's the thing, that $20,000, like we can't take money from all of these funds necessarily, like, you know, we've got what, 6, 12, almost 14,000, almost $15,000 there. That doesn't mean that we would get approved for all of that money. It just means that those are funds that we could potentially apply for. So, that's just a summary of that issue. There are other building repairs and maintenance that we know of. There is a need to look at rebuilding the bathrooms that are across from the library in the school. That rebuild would be about 25,000. There's also a need to remove and add glycol to the closed-loop system and add a closed-loop inhibitor. And that is about 13.5. So, if anyone has questions about those things, Roger is available to answer those at the end. So, if you have questions, write them down and we'll make sure that we get them to you. The technology portion of this is a potential server replacement. So, it's just an infrastructure server. It would, you know, help to support, help to support the needs of the building. And that's about a $10,000 replacement. And again, those are not included in the budget. Okay, we are here to article three. So, article three is about the MBEA collective bargaining agreement. So, I'm going to read it to you and then we'll, Mr. Ekoff will jump in and share a little bit more information. So, article three reads Sheldon Mont Vernon School District approved the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the school board and MBEA, which is the Mont Vernon Education Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year. So, if you read down the list, the fiscal year is listed on the left and the estimated increase is listed on the right. So, I'm not going to read them off to you. They're there. Further, it says to further raise and appropriate the sum of 67,328 for the 2021-2022 year. Such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at the current staffing levels. There is a majority vote required. I'm going to have you, Michelle, just advance to the next slide briefly so that we can just talk about the current CBA before I turn it over to Mr. Ekoff. So, I know sometimes there's a question about what do those numbers mean? Like what does the estimated increase mean? So, I wanted to be able to ground it for you in the historical agreement. So, what you'll see here is again, same slide as what we had before, but for the existing CBA. So, you'll see fiscal year 2018 to 2019 and what the estimated increase was. It became an actual increase. Okay, so these were actual increases. So, the first year of the last agreement was an $80,000 increase. The second year was just under 82,000 and the third year was 77.6, almost 77.7. So, just so that you have a grounding in what the current agreement, what the increases were for the current agreement. Okay? So, Michelle, I'll have you pop back to slide number 14 and I'll ask Mr. Ekoff to take a couple of minutes and just walk us through any highlights here in the collective bargaining agreement that the community might be interested in. Pete, I can't hear you if you're...
Oh, I thought Michelle was going to talk. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. Are you, would you like, would you like to jump in?
No, I just, I'm fine. I thought she was going to comment, but this was my first go-around as a member of the negotiating team as well as Sarah. So, I honestly can feel that we went into this not only with eyes wide open, but more importantly, I think we went into the negotiations with ears wide open because we wanted to get a temperature of the room and find out what they were looking for. The negotiations were very, very pleasant, very accommodating. We have a wonderful staff. I think we all are aware of that within the community. The benefits of a small, very intimate setting for our students and our staff and our community is evident in the results. And the teachers reflect that. So, we listened intently. We also did some self-analysis with the help of Adam as to a comparative of where we were as a district in terms of our pay scale. Keep in mind that we need to attract new teachers when we have somebody leave our staff. But we also want to retain the teachers that we want to keep in the district and we have to be competitive. So, we have both of those elements that we have to negotiate, all keeping in mind that we need to keep our salary structure within the parameters of what our taxpayers can afford and the base that we can deliver. So, it was again, a very pleasant negotiation. It was four years. I will say that the one element that we addressed that they asked for and we acknowledged was the fact that we were very competitive at our entry level salaries for incoming teachers and years one through five or one through seven. But as our senior, as our senior teachers evolved through the system, we were becoming less competitive as a district. And again, we want to reward and pay our qualified teachers accordingly so we don't lose them to other districts. So, we addressed our pay scales within the contract structure over So we addressed our pay scales within the contract structure over the four years to address that. And we think we accomplished that by the the agreement that we reached with them. So I think the numbers are fair. I think the terms are fair. And I think the tax impact is is fair as well. So that would be my takeaway from the four-year contract that we negotiated.
Thank you, Pete. I I would echo that as well. It was my first time at the negotiation table. And I I would thank the the Education Association for their partnership and and we hope that the community sees the value in this in this agreement. Again, the the one thing that I would definitely highlight is the numbers here. So, you know, looking at the estimated increase year over year in the proposed agreement, each of those years is less than even than the last year of the current agreement. So I just wanted to to point that out to you. I think it's important to note. Adam, do you have anything that you'd like to add on this before we move on?
Well, I I know both board members were very deferential in saying it was their first negotiation, but it was a very successful one. Our relationship with the Mont Vernon Education Education Association is highly functional with a lot of mutual respect. We have great communication with our education association and our teachers in general. I need to recognize and applaud the work of their president, Jan Matty, and the rest of the negotiation team for their work. I hope the residents of Mont Vernon can appreciate how how much of a partner they have with the MBEA. This is an association that does not wrestle for every last nickel that could possibly be wrung out of the taxpayers of Mont Vernon. Instead, this is a group that seeks to do what's best for taxpayers and being very reasonable in the process. And the the voters of Mont Vernon, I think, should be very appreciative for what they have because they have a a special group of teachers that not only do exceptional work in the classroom, but are incredibly competent and great partners to work with at the negotiation table as well. So I'm very proud of this agreement. I thank the board members for it and the MBEA negotiation team for their work getting us to this point.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is a discussion about the tuition agreement with the Amherst School District. So I did mention to you a little bit earlier when we were looking at the pie chart, that tuition is a is a fair chunk of where we spend our money. Okay, Article Four deals with this tuition agreement because it was time again to renegotiate our agreement with the Amherst School District. So this article reads, shall the school district approve a new five-year tuition agreement with the Amherst School District to allow for continued education of the Mont Vernon students at the Amherst Middle School beginning July 1, 2021, in accordance with the proposed tuition agreement on file with the school district clerk? I'm going to have you advance to the next slide briefly, Michelle. Okay, Mr. O'Keefe, did you want to cover this slide? Did you want to jump in here?
Great, thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. And it was definitely an honor and a privilege to serve as the advocate for the town of Mont Vernon through the negotiation process with the town of Amherst. Both Chairwoman Lawrence and myself had the distinct pleasure to work with two board members over in Amherst that definitely understood where our thoughts were from from a cost standpoint and also some qualitative things that we'll talk about in just a moment. But I'm pretty pleased with with the the final product here, and I believe the tax base here in Mont Vernon is going to be well served by it. But before we get into what's changing, let's talk a little bit about the agreement as it currently stands. And Michelle, if you could do me one favor, just go ahead and actually go into present mode there. It's a little small and tight for me. That would be greatly appreciated. But the current agreement as it stands now is a 10-year contract that was negotiated with former board members as well as with the the Amherst District about 10 years ago, and it's expiring this year. And so we knew that we wanted to make sure that whatever we were going to negotiate going forward was going to take into consideration a couple of significant factors that are going to pop up here, and I'll explain that in just a moment. We also actually had a contract that was rather complicated for our business office to go ahead and calculate what the actual cost was for the town of Mont Vernon on a per student basis. It was a rather sophisticated calculation that was based on a couple of factors. Number one, an average cost throughout the year that was basically divided or devised from what we call an average daily membership or student that was attending the school five times a year. It didn't allow for our town to accurately budget for things that may pop up towards the end of the year. And sometimes we would artificially have a budget crunch and then only to realize that there was a significant amount left as a result of our tuition agreement with the town of Amherst and also vice versa, where we realized quite quickly that we were going to have some serious issues with the cost of paying tuition over to the town of Amherst. So those are the things that Chairwoman Lawrence and myself wanted to make sure that we addressed in a new contract with the town of Amherst, and I believe we successfully did so. So let's hop into the new stuff that that we're pretty pleased with. Number one, the new agreement is going to be for a five-year period with an option to extend for five years. Something Chairwoman Lawrence and myself had some concerns about is is a building project that the town of Amherst is going to be exploring over the course of the next couple of years. And that building project would have some costs that would be on the backs of Mount Vernon taxpayers. And so as a town resident as well as a board member, we wanted to have the opportunity to sort of really see what direction the town of Amherst is going to go in and more importantly, what the cost associated with that and how the town of Mont Vernon would have to participate in that. And we also wanted to create an exit strategy that we knew that if there was a path in the town of Amherst that we weren't necessarily comfortable with as a community, that we would have an option to explore other options or other choices, which at some point we'll 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 talk about. So we're pretty happy with having that contract actually expire at the end of five years. But if if we're pretty pleased with the way things go, we clearly can go ahead and at the vote of the school board at that time in five years, I can extend that contract for an additional five years. So it would be very similar to the 10-year contract that is expiring now. We also came up with a new way to calculate our tuition. And this is going to be something that I believe is very beneficial to our community, where we're going to go ahead and calculate the tuition based on the average student population or the CPP, the cost per pupil calculation that's actually measured and reported to the Department of Education every October. And it's going to be based on that cost over the previous two years. And the good thing about that is that there's going to be a cap. So the cap will be 5.6% increase to any given year. So the Mount Vernon tax base can be better prepared for a cost that may populate or come down the road. And a great example for that would be, let's say, the town of Amherst negotiates a new teacher contract for the folks at the middle school. It would give the town of Mont Vernon two years to prepare and absorb that that increase, being that we didn't have say in that contract negotiation, we didn't have say in the voting or the passing of that. But we would be required to participate in in the cost associated with that. And so capping any particular increase in any given year, as well as actually coming up with a more structured way to calculate what our tuition costs are, we believe it's more fair to the Mount Vernon tax base. It gives us more ease from a budgeting standpoint, just create more consistency throughout the year. So we have a better idea of what our overall costs are going to be to 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 the town of Amherst. And then, of course, it does give us an opportunity to phase out of our basic student enrollment at the middle school. So let's say hypothetically, we're at year five, the town of Mont Vernon decides that we do not want to continue our contract. We will allow an opportunity for current seventh graders to be basically teached out or taught out so they could attend eighth grade, continue that relationship based on the experience that they had in seventh grade. And then we could come up with a new solution for our existing sixth graders. So it gives us an opportunity to create a much better experience for students should the town of Mont Vernon wish to exit out of the contract. There's a couple of things that are not included on the slide here that I do want to share with the committee because this is the qualitative stuff that Chairwoman Lawrence and myself wanted to make sure was addressed in the overall agreement. And number one, it's it's basically in the way that we prepare for for our experience at the middle school. First and foremost, we wanted to make sure that our curriculum was coinciding quite well at the middle school. We didn't want any surprises about something that may not be working at our elementary school. And we only realized that when a student goes off to seventh or eighth grade. And so we are going to get performance reporting or testing reporting back to the Mont Vernon School Board so we can identify areas that we're going to need to focus on from a curriculum development standpoint at our at our building. We also wanted to make sure that there was collaboration, more collaboration between our sixth grade students here in Mont Vernon as well as the sixth grade students over in Amherst. And so we contractually will have two lessons, or two lessons. They're going to be coordinated between our sixth grade program and the sixth graders over at AMS. It gives an opportunity for students to, number one, be introduced to to their counterparts down the hill as well as just getting an idea of, you know, what to expect when they get over to the Amherst Middle School. But having that structure, it just means a lot because we we can create some accountability from that perspective. We also wanted to provide our sixth grade teachers an opportunity to receive professional development. So our curriculum is coinciding quite well. And so in the contract, we're also requiring our sixth grade professionals to work in conjunction with professional development with the sixth grade counterparts down the hill, something that we're pretty excited about. And the fourth item that is not included on the spreadsheet is something that is pretty near and dear to my heart. And that's the social emotional side of our our sixth graders and that kind of big anxiety ridden opportunity to now go to a different school with kids you don't know, because we're such a close tight-knit community here in Mont Vernon. We wanted to make sure that there was a more structured program and reporting back on that program back to the Mont Vernon School Board. And so each year with our current sixth graders, beginning next year into the seventh grade, the Amherst Middle School is required to develop a program that they can then have a one-to-one interaction with each one of our Mont Vernon kids to make sure that the experience is going well for them, that there's no significant points of anxiety for them that's not being addressed or or being satisfied from from an emotional development standpoint. And then we offer the proper support for kids through those first couple of months. And that program being in writing and and being required will then be reported back to the town of Mont Vernon School Board every single November. So we at least have an idea or gauge, number one, how our kids are doing. And number two, what we need to potentially think about for next year's sixth graders as they transition down to the seventh grade to see if there's any opportunities to make that that experience a little bit more robust and 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 beneficial to everyone. So in in summary, the tuition agreement is 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 pretty new from from a town of Mont Vernon standpoint. We didn't want to just rubber stamp the existing and just put another five-year piece on it. We wanted to make sure that there are substantial and impactful changes to our community. And I believe that this opportunity is 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 not only well-served, but it's a great contract that I hopefully our our community agrees and will support. That's all, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. That was a wonderful summary. And it was an honor to serve with you on that negotiation team. Again, a first-time negotiator, and I was really pleased with the partnership from our friends down in Amherst. So thanks again for that summary. Okay, we are to the Article Number Five, which is our property maintenance expendable trust fund contribution. So this is the one that's been funded since since FY18. It reads pretty much the same, Sheldon Mont Vernon School District raise and appropriate $50,000 to be added to the school property maintenance expendable trust fund established in March 2007 with said sum to come from the end, from the year-end unassigned fund balance surplus if it's available on June 30, 2021. This would be a majority vote required. So this is not a new thing. This is the thing that we've been funding year over year to make sure that we can keep our tax rate as smooth as possible and avoid any bumps when it comes to to major renovations. Okay, Michelle, we can advance. Thank you. This is a quick review of of the budget review process that we use this year. So you may be interested to know that we had an awful lot of meetings to discuss this. They went really well. We had a lot of budget workshops. You can kind of see the the meeting dates and the times that that we held those those workshops here. Michelle Croto facilitated those meetings. We were lucky enough to have a very engaged budget committee this year. Again, this year, that was headed by Karen Drum. And we just wanted the the community to be able to see that, you know, this is a process that takes an awful lot of time. We we all try and do our due diligence. And while we presented to you here in probably less than the course of an hour, I'm certainly know that many, many, many hours go into putting this together. And we we just wanted to to give you a quick overview of what that process looked like. Also, the the thing to note, can we pop back to that one for a second? The thing to note just for next year, right? If you're interested in how this process works, and I know moderator Mr. King would tell you the same thing. If you're interested in how this process works, this is kind of what it looks like, you know? You can get involved on the budget committee. You can you can look through these, you know, through the 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 meeting dates here and see that, well, it is a little bit of a commitment. It definitely gives you the opportunity to get review in in advance of the process and during the process so that your voice can also be heard and so that you can get to really see and understand how this budget works. Thank you, Michelle. We can go forward one. We definitely want to acknowledge that wonderful budget committee again this year. Huge thanks go out to Karen Drum for chairing that committee. We had Jess Goonin, Matt Doherty, Zach Gray, Kim Roberts was the select board rep and Mr. Eckhoff was the school board rep. So wanted to say thank you to all of you for your participation in the budget committee this year. Next steps we have, these are the dates that you might be interested in knowing. So tonight is the 14th. Clearly, we had a school board meeting and the budget committee will be voting on the budget and the warrant article recommendations. Coming up on the 18th, you'll see the warrant, the budget, and the default calculation posted. February 3rd is the deliberative session. That one you'll see posted also. So just for for your information, on that evening, we'll have a school board meeting that begins at 6:00 PM. That'll go from 6:00 to 7:00. And then the deliberative session will start at 7:00 o'clock. We will tell you that in order to participate in the deliberative session, you do need to be present in person. So unlike this meeting where we can all participate on Zoom and where the public has the opportunity to comment and offer their questions as part of this process in the public hearing, the the deliberative session is a little bit of a different beast. So you do have to be present in person at the NPR, at the multipurpose room at the school on that evening. You need to register. There's a process. Moderator Moderator King will explain that in just a minute, given the opportunity to do that if you'd like. So just know that that's a different process than what happens this evening. So to participate in the deliberative session and to have your voice heard on that evening, you do need to be present in person. Okay, the annual report will be available on the 18th of February and then district voting will happen on March 9. Mr. King, I'd like to give you the opportunity now, if you if you would like to talk about the deliberative session, would you like to do that?
Oh, yeah, thanks.
We can hear you.
Okay. Could I just ask how many people are on the call? Because I I just had a conversation with you, the school board, and I don't know if I'm talking to the same group or a different group now, so.
So it looks like there are, in addition to the 12 panels that you can see on screen, you are one of 12 attendees.
Excellent, okay. Good, so my job as the the elected school district moderator, one of the one of the functions is to appoint a budget committee, as was said before, and we do have a great budget committee this year. If anyone's interested, please see the moderator. I am running for reelection, so if I get it and you're interested in budget committee, please see me. If not, see the new moderator for the school. I wanted to talk just for a moment about the deliberative session. It's, we we recognize that we're we're in a COVID environment and our goal is to make the deliberative session as safe to everyone who wants to attend as we can. I think we mentioned, or Sarah mentioned, that it would be available via a Zoom platform if you want to watch the meeting. It's important to note, though, you'd just be an observer. You wouldn't be able to comment or vote on any articles. And the reason for that is we can only have votes votes taken by registered voters. So if you choose to come to the deliberative session and you are a voter, you'll be checked in from the voter list by the supervisors of the checklist. You'll be given a card that allows you to vote on the warrant articles. I'm I'm sure there's many, there's there's probably some of you in this audience that are new to this and and trying to understand what this is all about. Well, probably about 15 years ago or so, we voted to have the school district be called an SB2 district. Stands for a Senate Bill Two that allowed, instead of a traditional school district meeting where the floor was live, everyone could come and vote on every every article on the floor, we do it differently in an SB2 town. We will look at the warrant during the deliberative session and it can be discussed and debated. And as moderator, I can accept some limited changes to the language of the the articles or or possibly the dollar amounts. At the end of the or during the deliberative session, At the end of the or during the deliberative session, we will the voters who are present will vote to place the warrant on the ballot either as written by the school board, as presented by the board, or as amended during the meeting. The meeting folks again will have the opportunity to do some limited amendments. Whatever is decided at the deliberative will then be placed on a ballot, a paper ballot. No different than we do every town meeting or I'm sorry, town election, and that will be on March ninth. As as in the past, the polls will be open seven A M till seven P M. Every registered voter will have an opportunity to vote and the warrant as determined during the deliberative will be available as well as folks who are running for town government or school district government position such as school board or a selectman. That ballot will contain from what I see right now, there's there's two questions that that have to be answered by the voters regarding the what we're looking at right now. The first one is, do we vote to approve the proposed budget? And that can either pass or it can fail. And if it fails, then the default budget would take effect for next year. And as Ms. Lauren said, there's about a four thousand or five thousand dollar difference between those two numbers. The second article that would be voted on would be the warrant article to fund fifty thousand dollars into a capital reserve to pay for building maintenance such as the roof or the the HVAC system repairs, which would be somewhere down the road. So that's really the process. It's two steps. There's deliberative, which will determine the the actual warrant articles that appear on the ballot. And then there's the ballot, which all voters will get to, you know, give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down on a paper ballot, secret ballot. And it's probably going to be a hand count ballot, although we do have a voting machine. I think we may go with paper ballots, provided we can get or the the town can get volunteers to count ballots. That's been a challenge over the past year or so. So that's, I guess, a quick overview. If anyone has questions, I've been trying to keep some information available on Facebook. It's there's going to be information coming out in the town flyer shortly. And if anyone needs to get a hold of me or don't know who your moderator is, I'm sure you can call the S A U and they can direct that to me, but I'd be happy to answer questions for anyone. Because again, this is this is a process. I know a lot of people aren't familiar with it. And I just want it to be very clear that the deliberative we vote on the language and and can make some changes to some of the articles. And the voting is where the voters will determine, you know, what what is going to be what what comes out of the the budget and what goes to the school and and, you know, what comes out of your taxes type of thing. So I'll leave it at that. I don't know if I'll stay online if if there's an opportunity for questions. I'll be here at the at the board's discretion. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. King. It's always it's always a pleasure and you certainly helped to clarify the process. And I know that there's a lot of a lot of new members of our community who may not exactly understand how the process works. So thank you very much for summarizing that so eloquently. And, you know, definitely know that any of your board members are also available to help you figure out, you know, what the process looks like. We're all available to you. Our email addresses are available on the S A U website, I believe, or you can email the S A U and get in touch with any of us. We're all here to help you figure out, you know, what the next steps are, what the process looks like and and what your role can be. You know, it's important. We're happy to have you here.
Ms. Lawrence, may I add one more thing?
Of course.
Okay, I I forgot to mention, I mean, I have been spending a lot of time with this as well as our town moderator, David Sturm. But the question is, how do we do this during this COVID time and how do we do it safely? The fact is, the the turnout for the deliberative session for Mount Vernon is historically low. In the order of under twenty people have come out for the deliberative. And based on that and based on the fact that we do not have controversial budget items from from what I can see, I expect that the turnout is not going to be tremendous. Therefore, we will set up the MPR so that we can accommodate maybe fifty people but in a socially distant, six foot apart area. We also, we do need to, we do have a requirement in the school that folks must wear masks. But there are some people who have expressed their right as a voter trumps their right or their their obligation to wear a mask. And we have to recognize that's the reality. We can't tell people they can't come to vote. We can't tell people they can't come to a deliberative. So our plan will be, and I'll work with Adam on this. We will have a room set aside if folks determine show up and do not want to wear masks. We will have a room set up with a video feed. And but not just a Zoom meeting, it'll be the opportunity will be given to them to interact and ask questions of the meeting as if they were on the floor. If for some reason we have a lot of people show up, we will have the opportunity to spread people out in the schoolroom. It could be a little chaotic to get it going, but that that will happen. And we'll get people spread out so that everybody's comfortable and nobody feels threatened that they are not safe and and can't vote and things like that. We'll do what we can to accommodate people safely. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that the community appreciates those efforts and and certainly thank you for clarifying that process. And at this time, I want to to let the public know that we are certainly happy that you're here and we really do value public input. If you would like to speak, we would ask that you please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. It may be new to you. If it is, you know, you you kind of click on the little click on the participants. The two little people down at the bottom of your screen, click on that and you'll see your name in the list. And when you do that, you can you can use the raise your hand feature. So just click there. It may also be at the bottom of that list. You just click raise your hand and then we'll be alerted to the fact that you'd like to speak. So use the raise your hand feature in Zoom to be recognized. And once you do that, we'll ask you to unmute yourself and you'll be allowed to speak. When you do, we would ask that you state your name and the road that you live on in Mount Vernon. And I do also want to let you know that that we are capping comments at three minutes at this time just for a state of efficiency. So we're going to open that up now. If anyone has questions or comments, you, again, you've got your board here. You've got your administrative team here. We're all here to answer your questions if you have them. So what do you got?
We do have Mrs. Eileen Neighbor has raised her hand.
Okay, so Eileen, go ahead and and unmute yourself and just state your name again and the road that you live on, and we're happy to hear your questions or comments.
Okay, Eileen Neighbor, fourteen Beach Hill Road. My first comment, the five point seven percent in the default budget. Those include the new teacher, what could be the new teacher salaries, correct?
Correct. They do not, they do not include that. That's correct.
And on the teachers proposed salary schedule, why the big jump between years two and three?
Years two and three. Hang on. Superintendent Steele, do you have that handy and would you like to speak to that if possible or Michelle?
Sure, I do have the teacher's salary scale up on my screen right now. From what from what I can see, we we have each year has a half a percentage cost of living increase each year for four years and then a proportional additional amount for the top steps that is spread out. But it's consistent every year. And so I'm not seeing a jump from year two to three, but I could be missing something, Mrs. Neighbor, if you could help me out.
Well, it could be that I couldn't read, you know, it was kind of small.
Adam, this is Pete. It goes from in year twenty twenty three, it goes from sixty seven, four ninety eight and it jumps to seventy four, one sixty seven. I think that's what Eileen is referencing. And I I think the increase in Adam, you can you you're knowledgeable and can jump in. But my guess would be it it has to do with how many teachers move into different steps, which causes the spike. But get again, to Adam's point, the the salary increases were tiered towards seniority and step increases. So that's, I think, probably what caused that jump of this about seven thousand dollars there, Eileen.
Okay, thank you.
That's exactly right. Thank you.
Is that what you were talking about, Eileen? Not not the salary schedule, but the actual overall increase year over year?
Well, yeah, the two, you know, some, the first two years was, you know, two thousand and then it was seven.
Gotcha. Does that, I I think that that Mr. Eckhoff explained what that is and yeah, does that make sense now?
That answers my question. Now I have one more on the tuition agreement with the middle school. When they listed a cap of what, six, I lost the number.
Five point six percent.
I assume that is per person, not total.
It's a, I believe, Mr. O'Keefe, you can confirm, but it's a five point six percent cap total, not per pupil.
So if we all of a sudden had six more kids, we'd get a bargain.
Yeah, no, I Eileen, from from that perspective, it it actually goes per pupil. So if we send over forty five kids, you know, we will, you know, be paying no more than a five point six percent cost per pupil calculation. It's really designed to keep and check any sizable increases that come that are negotiated through a bargaining agreement, through a calamity provision in the building, something along those lines, Eileen. So collectively, you're you're correct. If we were to use it as one sole, you know, lump sum number, five point six percent cap, it would be a huge win for the town of Mount Vernon and the Amherst taxpayer would never allow that. So it goes by a per student cost perspective.
I think it might be smart to change that slide to show that. Also, for you're going to pay the average cost to DOE over the previous two years or two school years. Now, is that amount that goes to the DOE is that take like Amherst spotting, Amherst and the extraneous costs for the
It it absolutely does, Eileen. So if you, the contract actually specifically stipulates that those ancillary costs to the town of Amherst do not get assessed to the town of Mount Vernon. This is truly the cost of educating the kiddos inside the building. And there's one unique change also to this agreement that I did not mention earlier. So thank you for bringing it up is we're starting to actually bring in some of those special education costs and bundling that into the average cost for 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 the education. So if we needed to hire fourteen different paraprofessionals, we wouldn't necessarily get charged the cost of hiring fourteen different paraprofessionals that would be absorbed into the average cost for for the students across the entire school. So it's it's a big benefit to to such a small town like ours.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the great questions. I'm looking to see if any other hands are raised at this time. Mr. King.
Thanks. This is this
Mr. King, you're muted.
How's that?
Now we can hear you.
I thought I am. I'm sorry. So this is Peter King, Kinnell Road, and I'm not the moderator right now. I'm just asking a question. First of all, I want to thank the two of you that vote that worked on the tuition agreement with Amherst. I'm starting to realize how old I was because I think it was twenty years ago I did this. I can't even believe that, but it was a very difficult situation. So which brings my question, it's a five year contract with a five year extension. And and my take on this, doing it twenty years ago, was ten years goes by really quickly with a contract like this. So ten years is favorable as opposed to five year contracts. So is the five year contract with the option, does either side have the ability to cancel that at after five years or is it is it just Mount Vernon has the opportunity to extend it? Thank you.
Great question, Peter. And that was something that actually was forefront of both Chairman Lawrence's mind and my own. When we take a look at the stuff that was actually coming down the pike from a cost standpoint, we didn't want to saddle a future board with a lock in with a two year exit strategy out of that. We wanted to have the ability for our community to make a decision that was most prudent and effective for itself. If the town of Amherst decides to raise some sizable amounts for for improvements to the building, we wanted to allow our board at that time to then do an evaluation to see if there were any alternatives that were in the best interest of our community and our kids or maintain the same status quo. And so that five year agreement was pretty important at the beginning. Allow us to sit back and analyze and evaluate what was going to go on in our neighboring town. And then allowing our board at that time to make a decision in terms of continuing it or actually terminate negotiating something new and figuring out what we can do for our kiddos here in Mount Vernon.
Does that answer your question, Mr. King?
Thank you. Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thanks for the great explanation, Mr. O'Keefe. Looking to see if anyone else would would like the floor. So questions, comments? While we're waiting, I do have a request from Mrs. Hinckley to just ask if if Pete, Adam or Kim can address how the school would be cleaned and sanitized after after the deliberative session, if people attend and don't wear masks, you know, in that in in that location. Just because it's, you know, a community facility and I'm sure the question will also come up. So how might that be addressed?
I'm happy to address that. So we we treat our schools every day that they're in session as if someone who is potentially COVID positive is in the school during that day. So every night we have extra disinfecting protocols that we use to ensure that school is safe the next day. So this would be no different. We would one difference would be, however, that we would give extra attention to the places where people were from the from the public the night before. So really not a different process, but just focusing our attention on where people will be that that evening.
Thank you. I'm just looking again over to our public attendees to see if there are any other questions or comments at this time. So we are at the point where we've given our presentation. We've put it all out there for you. You know, we we hope that we've done a great job presenting it and, you know, certainly want to give you the opportunity to ask questions if you've got them. And this isn't a speak now or forever hold your peace kind of thing. If you come up with questions after the fact, you know, like I mentioned before, your board members are available. You know, your administrative team is responsive. So we're certainly here for you if anything comes up in the interim between now and the deliberative session. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. So I'm just going to ask the panelists here if there's anything that anyone would like to add. Is there anything that we missed? Anything that anyone who didn't have the opportunity to speak would like to share? Just looking at you.
Dr. Sackey. Yeah, welcome. Thank you. I just want to say that the staff at Mount Vernon Village School really appreciates all the support and the trust that the community gives to us. And, you know, it's been a really, it's been a challenging year for everybody. But certainly the fact that we've all kind of come together and done what's best for kids is is kind of what keeps us going every single day. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. And thank you to certainly to to you and to the the other staff and and to the students as well in that building. And while now in our in our community at large, because it's it's a big deal. You know, the education that's happening right now in this environment and we certainly appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you. We have a great staff. We certainly do.
Yes, we do. Okay, friends, I am not seeing any other hands raised over in our attendees. So I will say thank you very much for all of the public participation. For anybody who is watching us on Facebook, we thank you as well for joining. And if certainly, again, if you if you catch this on a And if certainly, again, if you, if you catch this on a replay, if you read the minutes, however you come to this point in time, if you have questions, reach out. We are here to help, to help you understand, you know, the, the budget and what's happening, what's happening there. You know, we're here to, to respond to your questions, comments and concerns. And, and at this point, we do, we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So I would be willing to accept a motion to close the public hearing. And then after that, we just need to reconvene the school board meeting briefly so that we can make a motion to place each article on the official ballot. So that's the rest of what's happening here this evening, just as a FYI. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing? From a board member?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mrs. Hinckley. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second that.
Thank you, Mr. Eckhoff. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Hearing none. Let's take a vote. Mr. St. Dennis.
St. Dennis, yes.
Mr. O'Keefe.
O'Keefe, yes.
Mr. Eckhoff.
Eckhoff, yes.
Mrs. Hinckley.
Hinckley, yes.
And Lawrence, yes. So thank you very much. We are closing out the public hearing at 8:11. And at this time, we will reconvene our school board meeting at 8:11:02, basically. So thanks, everyone, for your participation. I think that went very well and I hope that the public received the information well, and I'm just proud of everyone for the effort. So thank you so much for what you put in and presenting the information to our community. It's appreciated. We do need some motions to place these articles on the official ballot. So I think, Mr. O'Keefe?
I make a motion to move articles one, two, three and four to the ballot as written.
Okay. Do I have a second for that motion? Mrs. Hinckley? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Steele.
I, if I might suggest that Mr. O'Keefe means articles two, three, four and five, as article number one is the reelection of officers.
Thank you. I have made my motion to do two, three, four and five.
Thank you, Mrs. Hinckley. Do you second the amended motion? Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote. Mr. St. Dennis.
St. Dennis, yes.
Mr. O'Keefe.
Keefe, yes.
Mr. Eckhoff. I, I think you said yes, Mr. Eckhoff. Mrs. Hinckley?
Hinckley, yes.
Okay, thank you. And Lawrence, yes. So we have made the motions to place those articles on the official ballot. And I believe that closes out our meeting for this evening unless Superintendent Steele, we have anything else to discuss.
I just have a need for a brief non-public, please.
Okay. So we can take a motion to enter non-public. Do we have the RSA for that?
Yes, it is letters A and C under the non-public statute.
Okay, thank you. Would, would a board member like to make that motion?
Move to go into the non-public.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second that.
Thank you, Mr. Eckhoff. Let's take a roll call vote. Mr. St. Dennis.
Dennis, yes.
Mr. O'Keefe.
O'Keefe, yes.
Mr. Eckhoff.
Eckhoff, yes.
Mrs. Hinckley.
Hinckley, yes.
And Lawrence, yes. So I thank you and we will enter non-public. Mr. Steele, can you take care of that?
Will do.
Thank you, everyone.
So I don't need any administrators to stick around. You guys can all be done. So Michelle and Christine, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Oh.